Like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832, regular board meeting on Thursday, March 14th, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Sorry, oh, 7:28 PM, I apologize. Okay, please join me for the pledge. Full call of attendance? Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda? By Director Peterson. Seconded by Director Domann. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'm over.
By Director Donna.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? Director Regan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item 14F, please. Approval of the revised 2024 school board calendar and move it to action item 11B.
All right, we will now vote on the consent agenda with that item removed. All those in favor, oh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now we'll move on to presentations and recognition.
Well, in the first item, after we have a Zephyr Alerting showcase, this is always the opportunity for the board to comment on some of the things you got a chance to see this evening. So, first recognition.
It's always amazing to see what all these kids are up to. It's hard to summarize each group that was represented, but what stuck out to me, stood out to me the most was our DECA program is highly successful and it's been in existence one year. And our kids are essentially practicing for this, for their events, three days a week for 25 minutes apiece when other schools have it as a course. So, these kids are over, well, overachieving in pulling, in getting this program off the ground. So that, that stood out to me as what they've been doing in a short period of time.
I'd like to comment on, and I apologize if I'm giving the name of the club wrong. I think it was the Positive People Club?
Positive Peers.
Positive Peers. It was really cool to see such young kids, like our fourth graders coming together to do really impactful things for the community. I actually recall my children's bus driver last year receiving something from this club and being like very excited. Maybe it was earlier this year, I don't recall the time, but point being is the bus driver was like overwhelmed with how kind that was. And to see the fourth graders taking the initiative to pull that together, it was really impressive. So, it was very cool.
This, I've said this before, but this is probably one of my favorite things about, you know, being a part of this, witnessing what's happening here when the students come and share all of the things that are happening inside the school day. My takeaway from tonight was just the wide array of student passion and students who were able to, you know, demonstrate what they have learned, but really tapping into areas. I asked every one of them as I went around the room, had you done anything before with pottery, like before you got to the high school? Or when you were, you know, about spelling bee and, I mean, theater over here with the Ashland Theater and so many different things? And so many times the answer was, no, I had exposure to this in school and I didn't really know that I had really even liked this. And then I saw the student with pottery and the drawing, the painting. She said, I'm going to go on and do this as a minor in college. And so, I just really appreciated all of their passions coming out and they were so proud of their work. So I just love that because everything from trying something new that's a bit risky, I've never done this before, to digging in and really wanting to take it to the next level. So I just loved it. There was such a great variety of things tonight.
I want to thank our teachers and other people who are leading students in the activities. And it's not so much their leading, but their guiding, I guess, because the students are very self-driven. But I appreciate the variety of activities, Barb, that you've put forward for us to view tonight, to see what's happening in the buildings. Again, I build on Director Regan's ideas of the student passion, but every student I talked to was able to speak very eloquently about the lifelong impact of what they're doing and how that relates to their futures. And I like the way they are able to talk about and show their skills in areas that align with what we did just earlier this week as a board with our desserts and dialogue and thinking about things that skills and concepts students need to be successful. And so I was really appreciative of that, that connection that I was able to see in that work. So, thank you.
Well, I'll just add, I agree. I, one, I was almost overwhelmed by the variety. I, I think all of them have been mentioned except for the Future Cities class, which was really fun to see that as part of the curriculum now is an option for students, again, getting a choice to pursue something of interest to them. And I agree with what Director Payne just said about, I also thought how, well, it tied with the conversations we had earlier this week with our community members who are hiring young people and see recent graduates on a regular basis and what they're looking for. And it was, it was so affirming to see our students tonight and also the ones who spoke at the podium and just really know how to express themselves and know, know who they are and what, and where they want to go.
Our next staff, now we have Mr. Brisky. Guy behind the curtain is going to talk about his recognition this evening.
All right, good evening. I'm Scott Brisky, principal of Wildwood, and I am really excited to recognize Monica Still tonight. Monica is our AdSIS Behavior Para Professional. This is her first year at Wildwood. Before coming to Wildwood, Monica worked for over 10 years as an educator at the kindergarten level. She has three children, Jack, Henry, and Catherine. She loves going out to eat with her kids, doing puzzles, and I just learned this today, she is a giant Taylor Swift fan. She's a huge Swifty, her words, not mine. If you need to talk to Monica, you will find her zooming around Wildwood or working your other job at the Stillwater Target. If you need a laugh or a great story, just ask Monica about her neighbor. It's worth it, trust me. I looked at a lot of quotes of hard work and I found that Conan O'Brien said it best to describe Monica. Hard work, be kind, and amazing things will happen. Amazing things have happened since Monica came to Wildwood. Her main role is to ensure that our students are socially and emotionally ready for learning. She works with students one-on-one, she works with groups, she goes out for recess, she gives students breaks, and she even subs in the classroom. She subbed part-time, full day, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever our teachers need. Monica is a walking example of our strategic plan. She brings joy through her humor and will genuinely help out any person at any time that needs it. She supports the well-being of our students by ensuring that they are ready to learn. Within a week of working at Wildwood, Monica had bought a fanny pack and stuffed it full of games, treats, and trinkets to make sure those students get back on track. Monica is a relationship builder, not only between students, but with staff and our Wildwood family. I sent out an email asking for quotes and I received over 30 responses, which tells you how our staff feels about Monica. Here are some of the things that our staff had to say about her. Monica has been absolutely wonderful addition to our staff. She is organized, flexible, and able to quickly make authentic relationships with kids and adults. She worked with several of the learners in my classroom and they are all benefiting from her support. She has wonderful ideas and I am also learning from her. Monica is an outstanding para. She demonstrates kindness and gentle communications with students as well as adults. She has a wonderful sense of humor, which she shares with students and staff. Her background as an educator gives her the knowledge necessary to reach kids where they are at, at the moment, and helps them to gain trust with the students she works with. She is a great asset to Wildwood Elementary. Monica brings a wonderful light and energy to the Wildwood community. Her compassion and patience with the students is contagious. Monica is an incredible person and great teacher. She does a wonderful job building a positive connection with students, even in a position where she's frequently reviewing respectful behaviors with those individuals. I love this. I know when my students are with her that they are getting what they need from a trusted teacher. I am so thankful for her help this year. We are so unbelievably lucky that Monica found Wildwood. No matter what she is asked to deal with, Monica can be found rushing around Wildwood with a smile on her face. Her arms full of supplies, treasure boxes, stickers, games. In fact, on her first week at Wildwood, Monica said, I need to buy a fanny pack. The bottom line is, is Monica's hard work and dedication to our students and staff make Wildwood a better place. She is a true gift. Can we give Monica a round of applause?
You want to say something?
I do want to say something.
Oh, man, unexpected.
Sorry, it won't be even three minutes. Um, you got a good thing going on at Wildwood. Scott is a tremendous leader and the faculty and staff are incredibly talented. I've learned more in this year than I've learned in a very long time and I've been in education since 1992. So, keep it up. You guys are doing great.
So I'll just, do I just skip over? Okay, all right, I think we can move along now for the superintendent's report.
First two things from around the district. I just also want to highlight our dessert and dialogue event that we just had on Tuesday and share some upcoming events. So, I love this picture. Earlier, we were talking, Paul, or Director Donna was talking about DECA and these are some pictures from the state competition. You can see, I love this picture of Cory Jesperson, who placed fourth in the state competition and she's headed to the national competition. That's just who she is too, so it really captures, captures Cory there. Congratulations also to Adam Johnson. He's a class of 2024 student who was recently named the ninth 15th Student of the Month. And he has been an ambassador of the Diesel Trucks and Engine Technology Program for a long time. In fact, he talked to me about it at one point when I was at the high school. It was something he brought up right away with me when I was just talking to him about something else. So he is absolutely an ambassador of the program. But congratulations to Adam. Here's to the Math Count State Competition. We got to talk to some of these students this evening. So congratulations to this team who recently competed in the Math Count State Competition. They were among the top 10% of more than 1,300 Math Count students statewide who qualified. And they got to talk a little bit about their experience and how it was different than the rest of the year, just the excitement of something as big as the state competition. So that was fun to talk about this evening. But congratulations to that team. We also had a number of our students competing in state athletic competitions since we last talked. Evan McGuire, who placed second at the state championship. Also, of course, our boys hockey team, who placed fourth. And then we, you may have heard that our adapted floor hockey team was advanced to the semifinals of the state tournament at the same time. Just today, our Essence Club had a fashion show for their peers and the event was held during flex time and over 50 students attended. And I really appreciate this quote from the Essence Club advisor, Kelsey Joseph. The fashion show was an opportunity for the Essence Club members to be proud of who they are and showcase cultural fashion. The event, the event was a chance for the members to show a piece of themselves that their peers at school might not see every day. So, I appreciate that they put that together and shared a little bit of themselves with their friends, their peers. May, Zephyr Gala and Fundy that's coming up, and we're going to talk about this later, I think, probably at the end, to talk about what we'll, we'll be doing as a board for the Zephyr Gala, right? Yeah? Okay. Just taking note of the date, then when ticket sales end and the online auction when it starts. And then, of course, the Zephyr Gala on the phone. Oh, Zephyr Gala, Jesse Pierce, maybe you've met Jesse Pierce, he's going to be our emcee. I met her when she was, she spoke at Career Day last year and she's been involved in a number of other ways in our district since then. So our community education summer class registration is now open. Who knew that it would, we'd be talking about it this soon, that it's time to register for summer classes? So, also, there's a survey, I've received it a few times, looking for our feedback on community ed. So, if you've seen that, please participate. Just to highlight our dessert and dialogue that we held on Tuesday, I, I thought it was a wonderful event. I got to meet a lot of people I hadn't met before and really hear from these over 50 career professionals that are part of our community talking to us about those qualities, characteristics, and skills our students need for post-secondary success. We learned a lot, we learned from each other, and that will help us with our profile of a graduate as we move forward. And we'll learn more about that in the coming months. And just a few upcoming events here that to highlight. Let's Blow Zephyrs is our middle school spring social. I'm pretty excited about this. How many students have signed up for it?
Almost 300.
So, it's a thank you to community ed and for putting this together. Is this also with the PTO, in partnership with the PTO?
Actually, with the Middle School Student Leadership.
Oh, how about that? So a great partnership and I'm sure it'll be a really fun event. So, and that's all, I believe, I have. So, thank you. That's my update.
All right, now we'll move on to discussion items. Board member calendar. Does anyone have anything they want to call out on the calendar? Teaching and Learning Curriculum Follow-up.
Good evening. I am here as a follow-up to our February 22nd meeting where you had some great questions that you were asking for some additional information about. So that's what this slide says. As a reminder, the Teaching and Learning Department for Matamidai Public Schools regularly provides the school board and our community with updates and data about programming. This particular presentation is a follow-up to February 22nd where I talked about literacy and science. So a quick overview of how tonight is going to proceed. I'm going to begin with revisiting the context that I shared, so that's not a whole lot of new information. And then I'll go through the questions that you shared with me that you were looking for follow-up and then I will share an outline of our next steps. So, we reorganize the information for you in the context, just to make it in a, in a different format. So as you look at this chart, really what we're trying to show is that in that first column, these are the parameters that are the catalyst for the solutions that we've come to you sharing. The two big ideas that I want to highlight is our strategic plan. And within our strategic plan, we have a strategy and an action step that calls on us to have, to offer systems at Matamidai schools exist to support a strong foundation in reading, writing, math, and science for all students. Paired with our strategic plan, I have shared with you that there are some increased requirements that have come out legislatively in what's called the READ Act. And the READ Act has had unprecedented expectations for teachers and districts. It outlines in statute, specific professional development for particular roles in our district on a defined timeline. It articulates specific assessment tools for particular grades on a defined timeline and it calls out curriculum, specified curriculum resources. So those were the things that in my role as Director of Teaching and Learning, I am responsible to enact. So in, in our, the current things that are happening in our world, per the statute, carry the Center for Applied Research in Educational Improvement. And in partnership with the Minnesota Department of Education, has identified five curriculum resources that met a really rigorous process that they use to vet resources. Our elementary literacy curriculum review team followed a super-structured process to evaluate the resources and we made a decision for one part of our resources, we have to come back and look at foundational skills resources. Independent of the resources that we chose, there is a need to enhance our literacy practices. I've been with the school board before and that has really been a high priority that you all have called out. And so we have been doing our work when it comes to literacy. We know that we need to have explicit and systematic structured literacy in programming. And given the resources that were recommended through, I think there were more than 11,000 hours that Carrie spent reviewing the particular resources that were offered to them. The resources that were on the list require an additional increase of time. The recommendation is that there's two hours of core instruction coupled with 20 to 40 minutes of foundational skills instruction. And that 20 to 40 minutes is really grade level specific. We see more of a need in those early years and then it shifts as kids move through grade five. And just as a reminder of our context, we have determined that Letters Language Essentials for the Teachers of Reading and Spelling is our preferred state-required professional development resource. We are so very fortunate to have two internal facilitators. We have already sent two, or signed up two people. One person has already participated in the training, so she can be an additional trainer internally. And then we have another one on the horizon. And then preschool is also on the leading edge of being ready to provide internal training. We initiated a district implementation team to address both our implementation of letters, which is just one piece of our long-term literacy improvement plan, but also to outline all of the other intended improvements. And then finally, we will be exploring the elementary literacy instruction time during the school day to ensure that students receive an increase in literacy instruction. We're involving that district implementation team in that discussion. We're also inviting feedback from the instructional leadership teams at both Wildwood and OHJ to help refine that schedule. So that's literacy. Does anybody have any questions about the context when it comes to our literacy update?
I think I have two questions. One, I guess, is with regards to the Letters program, that being our decision, can you give us some context as to how, or how that compare, that program compares to what other schools are selecting for their program and kind of where we're at as a district as far as our progression with that program compared to other districts?
Yeah. So the state issued its list of three particular vendors. Letters is one of them and then there's Carial and Core are the three particular professional development opportunities. Letters is a more time-intensive professional development experience. Most of my colleagues who aren't, don't have the fortune of having internal trainers are looking to have something that's a little bit less time involved. And the challenge that we don't face because we have chosen Letters and we have internal facilitators is they're waiting for the state to go through its process to have districts learn when they can participate in the training. We get to choose how to orient our professional development because we, we have those internal trainers. My colleagues in other districts are waiting and they will likely need to adjust their school calendar in order to send teachers on days that the state says this is your date. And as we think about implementation, by the end of this school year, we will have all of our K5 teachers who have gone through the first half of the training. Wildwood did Unit 1 because that was more applicable and appropriate for what they needed. OHJ has gone through Volume 2. Next year, we're taking a pause from the learning because we're going to implement new resources and it would just be too heavy of a lift to do, to learn new resources and do that professional development. The following year, however, we will complete our Letters professional development for all of our teachers K5. We do have, I know you didn't ask this, but we do have a plan to sustain that learning experience for the new teachers that we hire. And we get to do that because we have those internal trainers. So we've already gathered a group of our newest Wildwood hires and they're going through Volume 1, even though their colleagues have participated last year in that learning experience.
I have a question about the last bullet point, our curriculum update, where it says we will explore elementary literacy instruction time in school day and it talks about to an increase of two hours. Is that internally, we're making that decision or is that coming from the state to have two hours of literacy instruction per day for students?
That's a great question. It is the guidelines that are in the curriculum resource in order to implement with fidelity. There's a block of literacy instruction, there's a block of small group, and then there's a chunk of time that needs to be allocated through, with the foundational skills. So the Department of Education and Carrie isn't stating overtly, you must have two and a half hours, but they recommended, here are the best resources available. And they both require about two and a half hours of literacy instruction.
I have a question about, when you say there was a structured process to evaluate the resources, was that looking, the process was looking at reading or literacy and math and sci, was it looking at the whole picture and what did that look like?
Thanks for that question. So the process was a So the process was about those literacy resources that were recommended via CARRY. So we were not looking at, we're not looking at all of the resources. When we think about the lift for an elementary teacher, we do our due diligence to make sure that they're only implementing one new thing at a time, rather than you need to do all of the things this year. So literacy is what's coming up for us as far as implementation. So our structured process had teachers really checking through how standards aligned is this? What are the resources that are for enrichment and remediation that are embedded in here? And really looking at our context and how does this serve our students? And that's how our team came to the decision that this was the resource that was a better fit for us than the other option that was available.
So I know, I don't know, I can imagine how much effort goes into things like Letters. And obviously, there's been investments in things like the decodable readers last year. I'm not sure if this exists, but at some point, would you be able to share with the board kind of the broader literacy roadmap for our district? And kind of when you see from a timeframe perspective, certain elements landing? And then to take it one step further, with these increased investments that were both, were making both from a time and a financial perspective, like what are the additional outcomes, like the very tangible outcomes we anticipate seeing with the different grade levels and kind of when those milestones might be achieved and that kind of thing?
So certainly that roadmap and the timeframe of what are our tasks? And what are the deadlines that we've set internally? And what are the external deadlines? We have that done and ready to share whenever it works for me to come back. As far as the quantitative outcomes, we don't have that through line that this one thing will result in this one thing. But we can look at, for example, at Wildwood, our winter screening data is definitely improved from where we were a year ago. And our teachers anecdotally are saying, because I did a year of Letters professional development and I have some resources that help me apply what I've learned, students are making greater gains than they have in the past. And they were already great gains.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't, it's not possible to map, obviously, these programs to specific results. But it would be really helpful, at least for me, to understand like, these are the type of improvements we expect to see or we plan to see so that we can continue to be champions for what, you know, all the great work that you guys are doing.
Yep, you bet.
Director Peterson.
I share something to Ryan and everyone, but on Thursdays, I go to Wildwood and I use the decodable books with the same kids every week. And today was a moment where Ryan, a kid I read with every week, he went from so every Thursday, I see those decodable books, which is why I asked last time, are they working? And this week, they worked. So I, I see it every week.
Great.
Big, big gains today.
I just have a comment, it's not a question. So, and every school across the whole state is dealing with increased literacy requirements and professional development everywhere is, that's just the focus, right? And that's coming from the state. I thought this, and it was my, again, this is just a comment, but this was my gut check feeling the first time you presented this bullet point. I think about a student who struggles with reading and writing. And to think that if we could have two and a half hours of their day with reading and writing, that might be really intimidating. I don't know if, again, it's just a comment, it's my gut check feeling. I felt it last time. I understand that we're putting structures in place for all students to be successful. I'm just thinking about like, if we have a large part of the day dedicated to literacy, which again, that's happening all over the state. I just wanted to throw it out there because I thought it both times when your presentation happened, to make sure that we are cognizant of what that instruction looks like. And obviously, we need to be because that's a large part of a kid's day, every single day, focused just on reading and writing. Again, just a comment, just my gut feeling.
I'll, I'll share two things about that. One, be, rest assured that we're not looking at doing two and a half hours connected. We know that children have stamina needs and breaks and all of those things are in there. So we will see multiple chunks of literacy throughout the day that align with those different pillars that we know in literacy. I would say the second thing that I would add to that, and one of the pieces that our teachers particularly appreciated about the curriculum resource that they, they decided was a best fit, is it calls on a very engaging way of interacting with text. And so we will be seeing kids who are invested in writing every single day, connected to texts that they're reading. There are protocols in place that call on students to engage in really collaborative discussion and discourse about their text. So I hear you, and I think that is one of those messages that we need to do a really good job of helping our community understand how the, the learning that we've done and the resource that we have made the decision to move forward with will allow for a really engaging experience for children.
Jen, do we have a definition for elementary literacy? What is it? Or if we don't have a definition, does the state have a definition for us?
So we look to our state standards to define that. And so when we think about the state standards, there are standards written in a number of buckets, if you will. There's reading instruction, there's writing instruction. And then there is speaking, listening, viewing, and exchanging ideas. And all of those things put together are literacy.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was context building or revisiting for our literacy update. Now to science, because these two things interplay when it comes to this update. So again, our strategic plan asks us to make sure that we have a strong foundation in reading, writing, math, and science for all students. And I shared with you the last time I was here that the new standards that were drafted by the Minnesota Department of Education demand a shift in both what we teach and how we teach science. So there's new content at many grade levels. This is a great review for you all. And the standards really call for instruction to include more inquiry-based, more hands-on experience, enhanced problem-solving skill development. And we, they take the science and engineering practices and embed them in all of the standards, rather than having a standalone STEM, science and engineering unit, for example. As I've been working with the Science Curriculum Review Team, unpacking those standards and really looking at where our, where our strengths and our opportunities for growth in instruction, one of the continued needs that they shared is we don't have enough time to really go as deep as these standards suggest. Another piece that it's important for me to bring in as far as our reality is we commit, and I have shared with you all, both in written form and in front of you, committing to ensuring that the highest level of student achievement and recognize the value of continuous improvement. Which is why when I do curriculum review, and some people don't love that I say this, but once you're in, you are never out. We continue to be in that continuous improvement process. So the update that I shared with you last time is that in order to support the coherence of a student's science experience, we did that rolling implementation. So we didn't do like we're going to do with literacy, where everybody adopts a new resource and moves forward with new instructional plans in one year. We started with one grade level and then moved to the next grade level. And then finished up with the, the third grade level in K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8. This goes on a little bit different of a trajectory, which I talked about last time. We have implemented new curriculum resources. O-HA has some great resources that they are pulling from and using the best they can in their current situation. And they're eager to capitalize on that as we look forward to the future. What questions you have for me regarding the science update? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move us on. So one of the things that you've heard in both of those context building is addressing a need for time. There are increased expectations for time to deliver literacy instruction. And there's an increased need to address science in a deeper way. And those were both catalysts for addressing the O-HA schedule. So the solution that we shared the last time I was here was that we were going to replace a Spanish specialist with a science specialist. Then the important thing to know about this particular solution is what happens or the plan is that our specialists and our classroom teacher are going to divide those science standards. And that shift of some of those science standards reduces the number of minutes that a classroom teacher will spend on science instruction, which allows space for that increased time in literacy instruction. So that was the catalyst. Yep.
Go back, whenever you were looking at the implementing the literacy, did you have, and then when the science came in, was math impacted? Were other areas impacted? I know we've heard about Spanish being impacted, but what about any other areas?
So when science came in and we've been implementing, our teachers, like I shared, have been on this rolling implementation. For fifth grade is really feeling the, I would say they have the most complex and most in-depth of the standards at O-HA. And third grade has gone a little bit lighter on their science instruction. Fifth grade is where that science MCA happens. And I think the push-pull is we know what science instruction is supposed to be like based on what the standards suggest to us, both with content and with the how we deliver science instruction. And our teachers are doing a fabulous job to the best of their ability. And as we continue to meet, part of what I call on each of my curriculum review teams to talk about is what are the strengths and what are the challenges? And what, what can we do about, you know, mitigating some of those challenges? And the consistent message from the O-HA folks on the Science Curriculum Review Team and the teachers who serve on the instructional leadership team have shared, it's a challenge. They have not, however, made a change in the amount of minutes that they allocate, which has not made an impact on math, for example, or social studies. We just do the best we can with the time that we have, and we need to do better. Before I get to the questions that you all asked me the last time I was here, I think it's important for you and for our community to understand that we do value the importance of language and culture. If, as a result, we will continue to offer language instruction in grades 6 through 12, that has never been part of our conversation, to make changes at the secondary level. We've heard some great requests and feedback from our community about what are the other ways that we can enhance language instruction? And so in partnership with our community education, we're exploring options to enhance language and culture opportunities for our elementary students. We know that that's not during the school day, but we certainly are looking for ways to do that. While it's not the same, it's important to note that our new literacy curriculum resource offers a rich exposure to various cultures through its complex text. As MDE and CARRY shared their rubric, part of what they looked at as they spent their 11,000 hours was how well do the texts offer diverse voices in authors, in characters, in images, and illustrations? And so this will help to mitigate some of the challenges in the solution we've offered. I think it's important to note in that final bullet that there are many experiences, including language and culture instruction, that are valuable to a child's development that we unfortunately do not include as part of our instructional day. If I had a magic wand, there would be children who are on field trips all the time. But there are, there are confines of what we have the capability of doing. And that's just one example. So this decision is not intended to communicate a value of which is more important for a child's development. It's really a response to the state's requirements and living out our community-developed strategic plan. So now I'm going to get back to the questions that you all asked that, and I appreciate the opportunity to share a response to your questions. So who was part of this curriculum update process? I think it's important to make very clear that district leadership makes decisions that include various stakeholder input and feedback. This was not a small group of parents who made the decision. It is not a handful of teachers who made the decision. This was district administration. And it is our practice to make sure that we continue to invite feedback and input from all of those different stakeholder groups that are part of our process. For this particular decision or solution, we leaned into our educator expertise. We have district committees that were involved, included the Science Curriculum Review Team, the English Language Arts Curriculum Review Team, the O-H Anderson Elementary School Instructional Leadership Team, and our District Leadership Team. We also did invite parent feedback as part of the District Curriculum Advisory. That, that committee is not charged with making decisions, but we offer them. You know, here is, here is a programmatic shift that we're considering. What are, what are the things that we need to be mindful of as we move forward? And we had some great discussion there and some really good in, helpful input. The District Curriculum Advisory is that parent, that parent group that gives feedback on curriculum initiatives. They're the ones who hear our course proposals each fall. They're the group that I go to with the World's Best Workforce Report before it comes to the meeting, before the school board meeting in October-ish. So that, it's a, it's a really important group that we have in our district. And that's the process. Before I get to the next question, what questions you have for me about this one?
So, gosh, I don't know where to start. So I, I want to go back to the District Curriculum Advisory piece. You know, I've been a part of that for four years on the board, or close to it now at this point. I did miss one meeting this year, and that one meeting was this discussion. I know that Stacy, you attended in my place. And I believe that that conversation was more about adding a STEM specialist and not what would go away in the place of that. And so, yes, there was parent feedback and there was support for that. But in the process of it, I have to say I'm quite disappointed in the process. I'm disappointed in the process and the fact that it was parent feedback about a STEM specialist, but not about what that would be in place of. And so that part for me is a little bit hard. In fact, I believe Stacy asked a question when a parent brought it up. And does this mean science is, or Spanish is going away? And I, I just think that, for me, the process was hard. So I think that's, for what it's worth, I just feel like I have to voice that. Of course, we know how important literacy is, how important science is. You know, I've been a social studies teacher my whole life. It's always an area that always got cut because it's not a tested area. So it really got very little time in the classroom. And so I think that something like this, to me, with the conversation about this, everyone obviously wants to add, and we can't have our kids in school from 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM. We want to offer all sorts of things. But I guess I'm trying to come back to my point of just when this whole conversation happened about that is an advisory group, that's not a decision-making group. The conversation, I think, maybe was, again, and because I wasn't present, so I'm not going to speak to something I don't know for, for certain, I guess I'm just a little disappointed in the whole process, how that went down with that one particular group.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move to the next question. Are other comparable elementary schools offering Spanish? When, there were a number of us who were reaching out to colleagues in other districts. And what we learned is that elementary schools that offer Spanish are often, not always, but often immersion programs. And those are often, but not always, in larger school districts where you can have an immersion program that doesn't pull. where you can have an immersion program that doesn't pull, that allows for that programmatic option without changing options for all students in what they may choose to do. Elementary schools that offer non-immersion Spanish programs have trade-offs with other content areas. I've seen with some of my colleagues that there is a decrease in art. There is a decrease in media, and those are areas that, those are the trade-offs. And in having conversations with them, they're feeling the pinch of new increased standards in arts and on-the-horizon standards in media. And they may need to face challenging situations like this as well. And often, elementary schools who retain non-immersion programs are not yet moving to implement the new literacy expectations. There isn't a requirement that we implement our new resources next year. Our teachers were ready because they've had some foundational learning in literacy, and they knew from that learning that the current resources were not the best fit for our students. And so they had a readiness to make that change. And some of my colleagues in other districts are just not there yet. And anecdotally shared, we will likely be having similar conversations in the future. Any questions for me about this slide?
Question, and I apologize, it's not about this slide. It's about something, Kelly, that you just mentioned. I haven't had the opportunity to participate in that committee. And I'm, I don't know if disappointed, disappointed is the right word, with losing Spanish at OH. My question, Kelly, is, based on your four years of experience with the committee, setting that example aside, do you think the committee's role has been fulfilled to this point? Are you comfortable with the setup and the way that it's played out over the last four years? Or do you think that we need to look at how we're doing things or doing things differently?
I don't think it's a function of the committee. I don't think it's that. I think that the committee has been great. There's been great representation from parents and teachers and students have been there, and we've had great conversations about what courses are coming. And Dr. Reichel's given us great updates on things. I'm just talking about one particular incident. I guess, so when we were presented with this the first time, last meeting, that was the first time that I had heard of it. And that we'd all heard of it, right? This was when it was presented to us the first time. And that curriculum advisory team had met prior to that. And the assumption or the conversation and summary in the notes and all of that were about adding a potential specialist. But I guess I didn't, what I didn't understand, and I don't know if it's my lack of understanding or if it was a lack of conversation or communication, that that meant replacing Spanish. That was where I didn't, that was a disconnect for me. No, I feel like it's a high-functioning committee and the purpose is advisory, and it's been, yeah.
I want to be incredibly transparent that I wasn't trying to point fingers or say that things aren't functioning properly. I'm just, I just want to call out that if there's an opportunity to improve something, like let's explore that. And so I hear you loud and clear. I just wanted to get your take on that, since I'm not exposed to those discussions.
Thank you. Another question that you all asked was what are other options or factors that we considered for this curriculum update? Though I've already shared that we have standards and statutory requirements, and we prioritized a solution that ensured implementation of those standards and is mindful of upcoming expectations. One of the things that is a part of the big work that you do is our financial situation. And we looked at the financial impact of what are the other options or factors as we explored potential solutions. And we prioritized a solution that did not require additional funding. We know that staffing is one of those pieces that isn't a one-time expenditure. It is something that we need to sustain over time. And so we were really mindful to come with a solution that did not require additional funding. We also did look at the staffing impact, and we prioritized a solution that ensured that other specialists retain their full-time contract. One of the ideas that was shared by, in some of the feedback that we've heard is let's add a specialist but reduce all of the specialists so we're not having a financial impact. And what that does is it decreases all of the specialists to a less than full-time. And that was one of those impacts that we prioritized the solution that made sure that staff could retain their full-time contract in those specialist positions. All right, so our next steps are to provide families and staff notification about the curriculum updates and implementation of what we've talked about here tonight. What other questions, comments, or ideas would you like to share?
Back with more in-depth answers. I think it helps us to understand how the decision. I think it's important that, I think you did a nice job acknowledging that we do value all of these experiences for our children, but something has to give. There's just so many things we can provide and fund. And so I appreciate that you walked us through how you got to the decision that you got to.
Thank you.
We'll move on to action items. So can I get a motion for approval of donations and grants? By Director Domon, second, seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? This is a approval for donations and grants for February 2024 totaling $4,482.19. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of the funds will be used to further the mission of the school district, and they are used towards the wishes of the donor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And now we have approval of the revised 2024 school board calendar. Do you have a motion?
Move the calendar forward as it stated.
By Director Payne.
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon.
Madam Chair. Could we, I think one board member is a little confused about what's happening. If you could explain the process, it would be helpful.
I didn't know I was. What do we second, Dina Aine?
So we moved from the consent agenda, the approval of the revised, and so. Yes.
So in Robert's rules, the way our meeting runs is that if we have things on consent and a board member would like an item pulled off consent, so it's not on that consent agenda where we say aye, it can be pulled, and then it lands later on our agenda. And so this item was pulled by a board member to be done separately. And so the item has been pulled to 11B right now. And so the motion I've made is to say that I would like to go ahead and move that item forward as proposed. And then Director Domon seconded that motion. So now Board Chair Stout is ready for us to have discussion on that item. But the motion on the floor is to approve the calendar. As.
As it was listed in the consent agenda. Any discussion? Director Reed.
So the reason why I want to move it to the consent agenda is, I know we've talked about this at length. We've talked about it many months ago about changing the school board calendar and moving it to Mondays. Since that time, I have not moved this network. I now am going to have a tremendous amount of time with Monday board meetings. And so leaving the calendar as it is right now allows me the opportunity that obviously we cannot discuss. That's why I pulled it. People will have to accept that my point that Monday travel will be very frequent for me, and I want to be present. That, I mean, that's really the bottom line. I just, I know that I'm going to have so many conferences with the change of schedule. But later in the week, I won't be traveling.
Clarification, so we voted to move it to Mondays last September. So this vote tonight doesn't change it from Mondays. It's just which Mondays it will be. I just want to make sure that's clear. We are already, we've already voted to move it to Mondays. That was last September. So that was, but when we did it, we set it for the first and the third and Mondays of the month. And now we're moving it to the second and the fourth.
And it doesn't matter because all of the Mondays.
And then there is one other thing that we put on there, and that has to do with the upcoming retreat. So just, we're just making note of that. We're still scheduled, that's not a change, but that is, just want everyone to understand. We're not adding something on that one. We're just changing a meeting to a retreat. Or scheduling session to a retreat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, school board committee reports. Oh, AMSD. Director Payne.
AMSD met on March 1st. At the meeting, we had Representative Edelson and Senator Duckworth come and Assistant Commissioner Bobby Burnham talking about REED Act, which we talked about tonight, and the drafting of what we're calling at this point in time, REED Act 2. And so there were updates on the current act and the implementation and how MDE is handling that. And then conversation around the current draft of REED Act 2, which is no longer the current draft, from board members and superintendents. And REED Act 2 is still in play in terms of it's still alive at the Capitol and being drafted and redrafted. I think DE 5 comes out today. I think it's coming out. So it's still very much in a point of revision. Then we recognized Joe Gothard as National Superintendent of the Year. Our next meeting is April 5th. We also had on March 5th, AMSD Day at the Capitol. And so Superintendent Deffern and I were able to attend that. We heard from the committee chairs, talked with many other board members and superintendents, talked to some representatives in the hallway, and attended Student Voice Day. And we had a former student from 916, our intermediate district, present to the committee at that hearing.
Arts and engineering pathways and raising funds for that in the engineering program. So, April 12th, we already heard about the tickets are on sale right now. And I'll probably be coming to all of you. Ask you about a donation for our basket that's been approached. If the school board would contribute a basket again. If anyone is interested or passionate about helping put together that basket or has a need for that basket. All the work around me right now, a lot of it is on the plan.
MSVA, Director Peterson.
With me as I'm getting used to this. Okay. The three, let's see, I picked a few things. I wanted you to know I took four pages of notes that I'm not obviously going to read. But I had to ask two board members, do I read everything from the meeting? No, so you can listen to it yourself or ask me any question. I'm enjoying this new committee or this new post I have. So the big things going on at the Capitol that are education-related are to fix a couple of things. One is the SRO, some clarification on police and in the schools. School Resource Officer, thank you. And the other one, they need to fix some stuff on the free lunch bill. It turns out you can't get a free milk if you bring your lunch from home. And so kids are taking the free lunch to get the milk, dump the lunch in the garbage just to drink milk. So they're working on a way to get free milk into that. The REED Act of funding $100 million because they're finding professional development requirements, and then they want volunteers in Paris to also have some training in the REED Act. One that caught my eye was, because we've talked about it at this table, how MCA opt-out affects state MCA scores. And so there's some legislators working on some wording for districts with the high MCA opt-out rate. Instructional hours for teachers and students. And then another one that caught my eye was the world's best workforce. Adding two things to that is tracking gifted and talented would be a presentation of world's best workforce. And also starting something, is your school on track for graduation? And that's looking at ninth graders, the requirements for ninth graders. And if they meet those requirements, those kids are labeled on track for graduation. So that would be something that is in Jen's report.
916, Director Payne.
916, we met on March 6th. I sent the talking, well, I didn't send the talking points out. Leslie, on my behalf, sent the talking points out. Thank you for always doing that. In addition to the talking points this month was the annual report for 916. So you can see a summary of what's happening in the district. We had recognition of two teachers who are retiring this year. We talked at length and had a nice presentation on REED Act implementation. And a report presentation, first we have some policies. We approved the school calendar for 916 with the same spring break we have. I did double-check that, so that is taken care of. We went over our next-year budget assumptions, so we can work on building that budget. There are no changes in the assumptions. We approved a transportation contract. Reapproved our Raptor technology contract for school safety communications. And then approved three contracts, including our teacher contracts, at the table. So our next meeting is in April. I got right on the date, the first Wednesday of April.
Any other board reports, Director Peterson?
Yes, if I could do PTO, please. There is a movie tomorrow night at OH Anderson for any children. Monday, we are going to have a Zoom, trying to pump up the PTO. As I've mentioned before, they need a president, a treasurer, and just, it's going to be an informational meeting for anyone in the community to log on. And this is what the PTO does. This is the minimal involvement. If you could just give an hour of your time, it would help tremendously. And they're going to hit how much money they raise that people might not know, and then how 100% of it goes right back into Wildwood and OH. The Fun Fair is May 17th, and they are looking for businesses, organizations, nonprofits. You can have a booth at the Fun Fair this year, $50 if you are a for-profit business. It's free if you're a nonprofit, and you can hand out your stuff. And then another thing is Mr. Mergas is a fourth-grade teacher at OH. He is up for a $10,000 NHL grant, and the NHL is giving $10,000 to a teacher with the most votes. And so you can go onto NHL.com and backslash teacher something, you'll find it, and you can vote for him every single day. And most votes, he'll get $10,000 for OH and himself in the classroom.
So Community Ed, I wanted to underscore. I think that went out to everybody, right? So please complete it and send it in.
I was very excited to see the brochure come out. Yeah. Lots of good things in there, so everyone should check it out. All right, any other?
I just have a question. Is, I saw in the consent agenda, the spring break trip that's organized teachers that might need I to go to Europe. Has that happened before? It has. I didn't.
Different locations, though.
I think.
Different locations, it's not always the same place.
Okay, no, that's tremendous. Yeah, okay.
Where's this, where are they going this year? But it's international? Oh, okay.
That's a tremendous.
Yes.
Opportunity, so. Seven, zero?
What? Yeah. Okay, well, on that note, I'm going to get a motion to adjourn. By Director. By Director Regan.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 You are adjourned, thank you.